I have six fifty-nine.
I'd like to call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Aldridge, Yudis?
Here.
McDermott?
Here.
Steph Nally?
Here.
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number four. Public comment on agenda items only. Looks like none. Number five, approved minutes from June sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Any additions or corrections or anything?
Make a motion we approve the minutes from the June sixth meeting.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nally?
Aye.
Aye. Number six, approve bills in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-five cents as presented for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nally?
Aye.
Aye. Number seven, discuss and approve agreement with connecting point for computer services. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Hancock for taking the time with me to sit down and go over it with me. I'm, I was the one who had questions last meeting about it. In his own defense, he didn't realize that you couldn't meet with more than two of us, two of us elected folks because of the Open Meetings Act. So I just want to say thank you and, and I appreciate the time that you took.
Okay, excellent. And I know one of the other questions you had was about email. Um, we don't have it in front of us today, except I think in front of your packets, you might have some, some correspondence we had. Um, doing a lot of communication with, um, the police department on how they do their email services, they're very happy with it. They already have a plan in place, like if there is a FOIA request that comes in or something, of how they can get access to that without the actual official having to, to dig through their stuff. Um, I think that's the route we're looking to go. We don't have everything completely solidified yet. Uh, in fact, I'm still looking at what domain we can have. There is a gentleman named Doug Oglesby that has ownership of the oglesby.us domain. I talked with him today. Um, so we'll see if there's a possibility he can release that to us. If not, there is another one. I don't want to say what it is because then someone will reserve it tomorrow. So there's another one that's similar to that, uh, that we could get. So we're still looking at all that. I think what we're looking for though is a, a long-term, um, agreement. And I think the email is down to less than a dollar a month. Sorry, just over a dollar a month. So it's a really good deal. Um, so again, that is still coming. Hopefully we'll have that within the next week, but I'd still like to approve the, uh, the, the contract to get everything moving that we need to for all the computer services.
I understand that the email will be separate from the rest of it then, correct?
Email, it'd be a se- it would be a separate contract or a separate agreement, I should say, yeah.
Okay.
Can we, uh, can we do anything as far as taking action on it now so that once everything comes through, we can get the ball turning instead of waiting another two weeks on it?
Um, so that's a really good question. In the past, some of these things really weren't really approved by the council. They probably should be.
I mean, if you're talking about a dollar a month, I don't think this is a, a go out for bid kind of thing or anything that we need to...
It, it, yeah, the cost is so little. The problem is though, like for example, it's, it's a multi-year agreement to get that deal for the emails.
I think you really have to have the agreement, Tony, to look at it and approve it.
However, we do have, we are setting a, uh, a special, a working meeting. We could make this the first item of business before we get into discussions if we want to do that.
I would appreciate that.
What we don't have here, so we have the cost of the emails, what we don't have though is the cost of the domain yet. We didn't get that far today with everything. I had, I had about an hour-long conversation with the, with the company this morning, so.
I'll make a motion we approve the agreement with connecting point.
Second.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Substate.
Steph Nally?
Aye.
Hern.
Aye. Just for future, if there's any questions you have that you want to discuss it before we go make the motion, you're always free to do that. So we can talk about it more if there's something that you wanted to get off your chest, but no, no big deal. Uh, number eight, approve request from easement from ComEd for construction staging. Um, I think we tabled this last time. So what this, and, and we had a couple of new things that were added to the agreement that would protect us a little bit more. Did you want to expand on that?
They didn't have a requirement for them to provide insurance. I requested through Jason that they provide insurance. I would have liked to have seen the amounts. I would have liked to have seen the city required to be listed as an additional insurer. They did come back and said they would agree to provide insurance. This is a very short agreement with them. I strongly suspect that ComEd is self-intreated to the point where we're thinking this might go, if anything ever goes wrong there anyway. So I told Jason, we beat this thing to that, let's just put our stamp of approval on it and then explain to the project.
So one thing I don't know if I, uh, explained in enough detail last time is where the location is. The location is where we were looking to get our solar field in. Um, we were hoping that this construction would have already started last month, but because of prices going up, one of the vendors, um, I think it's far enough long now, I can, I can report on that. Uh, one of the vendors decided they wanted more money for it, so they are actually in default in contracts. So the IMEA is, is looking to, to go pursue some legal action on that. But we have a couple of other vendors that are very interested in, in doing this. So the reason for that is if, if they would have started the project already, we wouldn't have been able to allow them to come in for an easement. So the, this is just a temporary easement. ComEd is looking to come in to do work on the tower line and they're going to pay us, I forget what was the number, like?
Thirteen thousand, some odd dollars.
Yeah, it's like thirteen thousand.
Four forty or something like that.
And they're essentially going to be in there for-
Fourteen, three thirty-four.
They're essentially going to be in there for about a week and a half sometime in August. So I didn't see any issue with that and the fact that we can get fourteen grand out of them for it, I think it's fantastic, so. Is there any other questions on that? Otherwise I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nally?
Aye.
Aye. Number nine, approved purchase of tender truck and agreement with Oglesby Fire Protection District.
So we talked to Pitt on this previously at last meeting. The agreement is, is that we'll use the two hundred thousand hours and ARPA funds towards the purchase. Um, the city's responsibility would be forty-three thousand eight hundred, I believe, something like that.
Forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty.
Yeah, forty-three, two eighty. And then we will finance a hundred, what, a hundred and eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine, five twenty.
Yeah, over course of fifteen years. And as we discussed, the Protect- Fire Protection District will be responsible for the actual interest accrued on that note. So our out-of-pocket should be that forty-three, two eighty.
So they're responsible for repaying you the hundred and eighty-nine, five twenty plus the interest.
Plus the interest, yes.
And we don't know what the interest is yet because as Terry indicated to me, we're not sure when this truck is going to come in and we're going to pay for it. Um, but they have to purchase it before the end of the month or they're going to lose it, is my understanding.
That's correct. If we don't have it, um, solidified by July first, then we lose the truck that they're holding for us. And right now that's a year out. If we don't get that, we're two years out. So it's advantageous for us to jump on this.
To ease it.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that?
I'll make a motion that we purchase the, um, tender for the fire department with the agreement with the Fire Protection District.
I'll second that motion.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nally?
Aye.
Hern.
Aye. Next is the electric truck bids. So we put something out in the news Tribune as required, but one of the things we didn't put in there, we just said they were due by ten AM Friday. We didn't say anything about opening them. So you do have to have a public opening, so I have them three here, but I just wanted to ask, uh, our attorney. We do have one person that put in a bid before I opened them that is on the council here. So is there any concerns about that, if that is the highest winning bid?
I can't tell you. I don't have any concerns about it, but I'm not sure it's a, a legal concern.
Okay.
Um, you know, it has the, it could have the appearance of some impropriety, I think, but the statute, I just read it again, uh, does indicate that the council can sell it to anybody in any way they see fit, as long as they, they do it by ordinance. I am, I, I suggested to Rich that if he's the winning bidder, that, you know, we would move this till the next meeting. I would bring the ordinance that is required to sell it to Rich or whoever.
Okay.
And if Rich can't do it from my research, then we would just move on to the next highest bidder and approve that at the next meeting instead.
Okay. Does anybody want to verify that they're all sealed? This person actually put like pen marks on there to show that it was sealed properly and stuff, so.
Initials on it, like evidence.
So, all right, I'll-
Is that Rich?
I don't know. They don't say who it's from. So, all right, I will, oh, they've really sealed this thing. Holy cow.
Do you have a pair of scissors?
Well, they don't, there's no edge.
Got to invest in some leather openers.
One dollar.
Go.
Yeah, one dollar. All that for, all right, I have, um, there's not, there's just pretty much a number and a name. So I have two thousand dollar from Eddie Sadnick, Oglesby. I have ninety, doesn't say who it is. I assume this is Barney though. Uh, nineteen ninety-seven Ford F- five fifty bucket truck bid from Cal Manufacturing Company for the Incorporated for the amount of three thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. Cal Manufacturing Incorporated. So three thousand, four hundred and fifty-two.
Be careful over there. Don't hurt yourself.
Bucket truck bid, five thousand, five hundred and one dollars, Rich Baldridge. That's our highest bid.
You really want that truck, huh?
By a park ride.
Yeah, there we go. So should we move this on to the next agenda then to approve, or are we, you saying you don't want to approve it tonight then?
No, you can approve awarding it to Rich, subject to my legal opinion that it's not a problem. Becky's got an issue.
Um, we need the ordinance disposing of public property, so probably-
Right, that's the ordinance I'm talking about for the next meeting, Becky.
Okay, so.
The statute does say that when you have an access piece of personal property, you can only sell it by ordinance to someone. Now, we've had a bidding process and Rich is the winner, so I would suggest you make a motion to approve the sale of the bucket truck, truck to Rich at this winning bid, subject to my legal opinion that it's not a problem. Um, and if not, we'll move on to the second bidder.
That's a really-
All right, I'm not going to repeat all that, but I'll make a motion.
You'll make that motion?
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on one second. That's a really long motion. Could we, could we just approve the ordinance with him being the, at the, at the next meeting?
Sure.
Do we want to do that or do we want to?
I still, my motion still stands. I'm just not repeating everything Pat just said, so.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
And I second that motion.
Aldridge?
Epstein.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nally?
Aye.
Hern.
Aye. Okay. Next up is set working meeting date and discuss potential agenda item topics. I think I talked to everybody ahead of time, one-on-one, and I think everybody was good for, um, June twenty-eighth, right? Seven PM? Is everybody good for that?
Do you want to do seven or you want to get an earlier start?
How about six?
Yeah.
Commissioner McDermott, I think you were someone saying seven. Do you need seven or can six work?
I'll make it work.
Okay.
It worked for Oglesby.
All right, so we can do six PM then. Six PM on the twenty-eighth of June. Um, just as a couple of ideas, uh, I'll give you ideas of what I know is going to be on that agenda for right now. Um, uh, talking about event coordination, I know everybody, we just got done with Fun Fest, so people probably think it's related to Fun Fest. It's really not. It's, uh, we wanted to get through Fun Fest for all, all the stuff that has to get done because there's so much coordination involved. But there's a lot of topics we need to talk about, like, like who's going to, how are we going to do event coordination in the future? Are we going to have a special contract for it? Um, what departments' responsibilities are all kinds? There's about three items on there for that. Uh, we're going to talk about city hall renovation, council chamber modifications. Um, we're going to bring back and talk about the check valve installation program. Somebody came in today to talk about that. We got a petition in on Friday from the bar owners about extending, uh, the noise time by an hour. We are, what else have we got on here? Couple old business items. The, there's a park board meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, it's Wednesday at six PM here, I think. So we had a lot of stuff that was about the dog park, softball field, drainage, disc golf, Seneca Square, all kinds of stuff like that. So they're going to have their first crack and opportunity to talk at that Wednesday night. So then we'll get, be able to get those recommendations to talk about live at our meeting. Uh, the facade committee meeting, do we have a date for that, when they're meeting?
Um, next Tuesday or the twenty-seventh.
Okay, the twenty-seventh. Uh, the facade committee is meeting, they're going to talk about some of the specifics of one of the items we talked about in the past, which was the, uh, uh, increasing the facade improvement program to expand on, on options to, uh, to open up for small businesses. Um, and that's about it. I don't know, does any other commissioners have anything they want to talk about now? Again, we don't have to finalize this agenda until next Monday.
I might have a couple of things, but.
Anything you want to talk about now, like give people a taste or?
I want to revisit, um, centralizing the city's supply purchases.
It's a good one.
Don't forget to put email on there.
That'll be at the top. We'll do that. We'll do email right at the top. That'll be the first official.
Appreciate that.
Unless we want to sell the bucket truck too, if you'll have it in that time, we could do, or do you want to just wait until July?
We could do that if you want.
Okay, we can do two official items if you want.
Six o'clock start's a good idea.
Okay, so we'll do those two formal items and then we'll get into all the other stuff. If anybody has anything else they'd like to add, you know, let us know and we'll, uh, we'll get it in there formalized on Monday. All right, um, next up is number twelve, old business tabled items. Do we have any items that, uh, I don't think there's any tabled ones that we have to bring back? Uh, is there anything else, old business anybody has? Okay. That being said, public comments over any topic. Wow, quiet. Now, right before we go into commissioner updates, I think there is an item that we might need to go into closed session to talk about, um, for a short period of time. So my understanding is we don't have to have it on the agenda if anything comes up, but we do have to cite the reason for it, right? Okay, so according to section two C of the Opening Meeting Act, provided to the public body can close and, can close a meeting to the public only when the following topics are to be considered. And this would be under collective negotiating matters or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. I don't know if it's actually, now that I think about that, it's not in regard to their salary schedules, but it is something in that collective bargaining agreement. That specifically states, is that something that?
I think you can.
We can? Okay. So I'd like a motion to see if we can go into closed session to talk about that briefly.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Sorry, guys, you dropped me off door.
I know we did, I apologize.
Let me ask you this, Jason.
Sure, before we go, okay?
For everybody else, can we go through the commissioner updates first and the mayor's report and then go into closed session? That way we're not holding people up unnecessarily or we can't do that?
The, I have no problem with that. The, the concern is Commissioner Steph Nally has an item that he'd like to talk about.
Oh, okay, gotcha. I understand.
Needs to go into closed session first before we do that.
It'll be short. I mean, we're talking about five minutes. I just want to brief the group on something and then we'll be done. I don't think it's anything that's really-
Unless you want to skip that one item and then give that last item as a report at the end. It's up to you.
I, either way, it's, it's fine.
Motion was made, second, we'll go into closed session. Did we do the vote yet?
Yeah.
You got to call the roll.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Yudis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nally?
Aye.
Hern.
Aye.
All right, let's chat about this quick and we'll come right back. Formalities, formalities.
Do it right.
Special. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. So if I'm sorry, I don't know. So. I don't know. 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 Yeah, that's right. I don't know. 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 I don't know.